All right. Called the meeting to order. I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Idaho Code Section 74206.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. I'm in favor. Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We will all be ayes. Don't worry.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion then? Hillary.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Kirsty.
Hi.
And I'm an I also. All right, I'm so excited for this next one. We're going to celebrate one of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Come on up and share a little bit about our pilot.
Yes, he's so exciting.
All right, for those who are here, this is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Julie Taylor. To give you a little brag on who she is beyond just the fact that she became a certified pilot. She's the first one in our program that actually earned a scholarship. It's between a $25,000 to $30,000 scholarship to go between her junior and senior year and become a certified pilot. So she is now a certified pilot after going to Mississippi to Delta College. But beyond that, she is also our senior ranking cadet in the Corps. So she is our Corps commander. She is pretty much everything that you would want in a student. And somebody goes, she also loves cats. And Hot Wheels. She has a collection evidently of Hot Wheels, which is out there. So you needed the world to know this sort of thing. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to her because she's the one who actually has achieved something. I'm just the old guy.
Yeah, so I'm Taylor. I spent eight weeks in Mississippi down at Delta State University. Basically, what my day to day was, I spent like at least 12 hours every single day training. And that was a mix of just like ground training and lessons and then actually being able to fly the planes and be in the air. My group, we completed the program pretty fast. We actually completed it in six weeks, which is crazy. Typically, it takes people at least like eight months to a year to do this. So we did it in six and we spent the last two basically just hanging around. But yeah, I'm a certified pilot. I can fly planes. My future goals, I hope to commission to the Air Force to be a pilot. So those are my future goals.
Well, congratulations. I just remembered all started here at Little Kuna High School.
Yeah, it all started here.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. All right, Assistant Superintendent Brian Graves, our hiring yearly update.
You can go click on the next one. Just the four years of data to compare. It's always fun, interesting to watch when you hear, I hear, so many people left, so much of this. By average, we replaced about 20% of our staff. Seventeen point eight. Where did last year replace 14, the year before that eighteen point seven, the year before that seventeen. So it's about the same. You can see that we, whether you scary or not, we've had to replace seven positions with contracted services. Typically, those are your SLP, occupational therapist, physical therapist, speech and language pathologists. It's just a very hard way for people to work in our business for the money we make compared to what they make. So we can't hire them, so then we have to hire a company that pay more to get their services. Twelve of our teachers were hired on alternate routes. That's not all bad. A lot of that is, we have a kindergarten teacher, second grade teacher, who is a PE teacher and she's adding the endorsement to be elementary. So she's a certified teacher. She's just teaching a little bit outside of that. Twenty-seven of her hires for first year, fourteen were in their first to four years. I mean, they taught one year experience. Ten with five to 10 years and then eighteen. So it's always, it's funny how we kind of always hire the most in the very beginning or veteran people coming over to us. The next slide shows you the question of why do they leave and kind of compare it to every year. Again, like always, went to another district in the area is the reason why most people leave us. This one is one, it's a strange one to track, but a position opens, so then you move and then you have to hire. You've got one of those people in the audience, Kristi Monk, who was a longtime English teacher. She took a dean position, so it opened up her English job. One of the bigger retirement years, and that's probably going to be a pattern. Just, that's what happens is you get people that, towards the end of their career and then we've got to replace those. Involuntary termination, that means the person, we didn't offer a contract ever back. After one year or two years, we kind of had the choice on whether we're offering a contract back.
Any questions? No, I just like you doing this every year because it helps me track, you know, what's going on in our schools and why people are leaving. You can kind of consistently see across the board, so I appreciate that. I hate to say this, but sometimes we become the farm team for some of those bigger districts around us. And I'd like to retain them as much as we can, especially the good ones. That's an ongoing issue, I know, for this.
Yeah, you could argue that there's nobody that probably has to compete and touch, we touch Boise, West Data, Indiana, three of the biggest four, and we have to compete with those.
Yeah, I think we do a good job.
Absolutely.
Anyway.
Thanks, guys.
All right. ISAT results, Kevin? I think we'll be working on this together later on.
Chair Nixon and trustees, I'm going to give you a copy of my talking points. Because I did not pre, I don't have a slide presentation for you tonight, which I'm sure you're thrilled to hear.
I thought I saw something on here.
Well, there is a link here. I'm just giving you this cool spreadsheet. But sometimes I miss my talking points, even though I put notes on top of my notes now to make sure that I cover everything. But this spreadsheet, maybe it looks familiar to you. It's our continuous improvement plan that we're required every year to submit to the state. But I wanted to share this with you tonight to give you an update of where we landed with our goals from last year. There's 18 academic areas on here. Those are the ones I'm going to go over with you tonight. Of those 18 goals, well, when we set these goals, we set them pretty ambitiously. There's an average of about 6% increase that we were looking for, which in hindsight, that's a tough, that's a tough ask in one year when you're moving whole grade levels in the district. But anyway, so of those 18 goal areas, nine of them, well, six of them, we met the goal. In three other areas, we didn't meet the goal, but we improved from the previous year. And then in the other nine, we were slightly lower, about the same, but didn't, didn't meet the goal and didn't improve either from last year. So it's kind of a mixed result overall. But I want to hit some of the highlights for you. I don't have the graduation data yet because they're still working on the appeals for all that. So I don't have the graduation data yet. But this first area here is all about the transition years and these are ISAT scores. So this is, they look at eighth grade and sixth grade, transition from elementary to middle and then that middle to high school transition. And you can see with eighth grade, we're looking at the ISAT score, we're looking at both the proficiency and then the growth, proficiency and growth. And the adequate growth, the state has a complicated formula to figure it out, so we have to wait for the state to get that information back to us. But with our eighth graders, we did meet three out of the four goal areas. The one we didn't, ironically, was the math growth, which is odd to me because our growth has been so good at the middle school level in particular in math. Then you look at our sixth grade area, we didn't meet any of those four areas. The one area which was ironically growth in math, we exceeded where we were at last year, just not quite made the goal that we set, which was a 6% increase. So overall here in this area of sixth and eighth grade, a couple of things we've already implemented for this year to address that. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, middle school added a reading class. So we took, we talked about this already, but our reading and our history will be full year, but every other day is on an AV schedule. So instead of having history every day in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade now, they'll have history one day and reading another day. So we'll still have our language arts every day and now they have a reading class. So essentially, we've added a semester worth of reading practice to our middle school students. Along with that, we purchased a supplemental product called Nuzel at ELA, which aligns with our curriculum and gives them additional resources where they can practice their reading skills. Because the reading comprehension skills, which is what they're targeting in those reading classes. Because their reading comprehension skills will carry over to all content areas. Then we also, for sixth through 12th grade, have purchased the diagnostic tool from iReady Reading. iReady Math is a curriculum we already use, and on the reading side, they have a diagnostic tool. So we have purchased that now for sixth through 12th grade, which will give us a consistent diagnostic benchmark tool, which we've never had before. So we'll be able to find out where those gaps are and continue to monitor that all the way through their careers here at Kuna School District. So that'll be a nice addition. Additionally, for math, we already have iReady Math K through eight, and we have purchased the diagnostic tool for ninth through 12 as well. Not all of our high school kids are going to take the iReady because they don't all need it. But we'll, we'll target our freshmen initially and then some of our kids that have higher needs. And we'll use that as a diagnostic tool and to help with our intervention that we want to improve in. So those are some things we've already put in place to address some of this here. Then if you'll scroll down for me, this is the early literacy part. This is mainly K three, the IRI, but it includes fourth grade down here at the end, so you can see that transition from the IRI to the ISAT. We had, in this area, we had three, no, two, sorry, two that we met. I think it's the third one. Is the third grade down here also? Yes. Three of those areas where we met the goals and then two more where we did better than the previous year and then the others were slightly lower. So in here, you've got proficiency in IRI, which we've already gone into detail with this data in the past, and then fourth grade ELA ISAT. The proficiency goal we didn't meet, but we did exceed where we were at in growth from last year. And this is an area, again, that's still, it's a troubled area for us. We've talked about, that's one of the reasons we're looking at our curriculum adoption, K five ELA. So that process will continue. We'll finish that this year, so we'll have a new reading and language arts curriculum for the next year. But we also, thankfully, because of the levy passing, we're able to purchase back what we call RAS Plus, which is a supplemental program for our K five kiddos that give them additional practice in their reading skills as well. Purchased AMIRA as our new IRI. AMIRA is like the cutting edge technology wise of science of reading instruction and assessment. So our elementary, if there's any elementary folks in the room, have been giving the new test to our kids these last couple of weeks. They're still going on. And AMIRA is, it uses AI to listen to the kids and assess where they're at with their reading. It's fascinating how well it actually does. So with that new intervention, they offered also a tutoring part. So we did, we purchased the tutoring part, so students now actually sit down. The name AMIRA is actually the name of the avatar. So she listens to the kids read and gives them live, immediate feedback. She stops them and corrects them, listening to them and responding to them. So it's amazing, the high level of data we get as well, because she analyzes every sound the kids produce as they're reading these words. So that additional RAS Plus practice, the new AMIRA tutoring, the new AMIRA assessment will give all of our kids more practice and more specific feedback, regardless of how good your teacher is in knowing the science of reading. But AMIRA tutoring will give all kids that feedback. So we're excited to see what that does at least. All right, I think I covered everything on that part.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If I, just to make sure I'm correct, like if I look at the 2023, 2024 results, that column, and then like, so I'm following to the next grade level up, right? Like if I want to follow the same kids, I could just go diagonally.
Yeah, you could do that.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Because I sort of feel like that's kind of interesting to see like where the same kids are as far as proficiency.
It is.
Because it's totally different kids every time you're testing.
It is, which is, it's frustrating for teachers too because we tend to look at that the most often.
Yeah, you're like, this is a different classroom.
Yes, exactly.
We've looked at that before, that we.
We have, yes.
I just have a comment. When I was looking back at the eighth grades, the screen above it.
Yeah.
That ELA.
Eagle.
Yeah. We are doing very well on that ISAT ELA. What are we doing in the classrooms that are causing that? Do we know?
Well, we changed curriculum, so we have my perspectives at middle school. And then not only changing the curriculum, which gave us probably more, I wasn't, I don't know the middle school history before that. I only have been there since we've had my perspectives.
Yeah.
But anytime you change a curriculum, you're looking at your instructional practices as well.
Right.
So it's likely that combination of teachers having to learn a new curriculum, which then forces us all to look at our instructional practices and look at our kids in different ways and new assessments. It just gives you a fresh look at things. So the, my perspective does give them a rigorous instructional.
So being kind of valid to the system and not going off on their own is what you're saying, kind of, might be?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't say that out loud too.
And then the other question is, we did do so well in math. Why is that not showing up on these results?
Well, it's showing up in the proficiency. We're still increasing, let's see, where's math? So we were at 48.6 last year, 52.2. We just didn't meet the growth goal because we set a six, almost a 6%.
So the 2% growth goal that the board set is a.
Yes, so that's, this is last year.
Right, right, right. No, I know that.
Yeah, so I'm sharing all this with you. You set me up perfectly.
Oh, can I say?
So if you'll go to this tab down here for me, with your direction from the board, that we, our goal is to have at least a 2% overall increase in proficiency in reading and math. That message was taken to heart and we shared that from day one, welcoming everybody back that the goal is 2%. And under Superintendent Beckett's direction, we've also now asked our administrative teams in each building. So you saw that tab we were just on. That's the goals for the whole district. And on that last column, I took where we were at this last year and I added 2% to everybody. So that's the minimum goal on all of those targets. So, and this sheet here, this will be a night away for us, Superintendent Beckettoff and I'm sure Assistant Superintendent Smith. We're going to go visit with schools. And we've asked each of them to set goals in these four areas specifically with the idea that 2% increase in mind. So that we have an alignment from teacher to building to district, so that we can achieve that 2% increase goal. So every school, we've asked them to have a goal or a focus in ELA and math, because that's obviously what we want to improve the overall proficiency in. But we also are using our PLC processes, which we've been training on over and over again, to help improve our instructional practices and our assessment of data. So we've asked each school to either give us a goal or a focus in the PLC area as well to improve that, as well as AVID, which is our instructional strategies, which focus a lot on reading in particular. So every school will have on this sheet, so we can all see these four goals and then any other goal that they feel is important to their specific school that will help them, with, again, with that idea in mind, that we're all working towards that 2% overall increase. Make sure I get everything. So I'm really excited for that. At every meeting, every month, as we meet with admin, we have built into our agenda a review of data towards that 2%.
Cool.
So we'll be looking at some kind of a data set every time we meet and tying it back to our district goal and the goal and the vision from the board of that 2% increase. So I'm really excited for that because it'll be intentional and it'll be in the forefront of our minds throughout the whole year that way. And one other thing we've done to help with that, if you'll bring up the Qualtrics. I want to show you the product that we purchased, our Qualtrics, which has, this is a data dashboard that I'm going to show you. We're still, it's not quite polished up yet, but it's pretty cool to see it. And I want to give you an idea of what this will be. This tool that we have purchased from Qualtrics will have data tools that we can use internally. And then there will also be public facing data dashboards, so that the community can see the data that we have. And this is kind of what it will look like. I mean, it can be, we can set it up in lots of different ways. So there's a public dashboard, internal dashboard, and there's a data analysis tool that we'll get to use with as well. So this is kind of how it looks. There's different ways you can format it. This data is the ISAT data from the state that they've, they've gone through and cleaned it up and removed kids that weren't here. There's the continuously enrolled, and then they've redacted data for small groups under, I think that's 25 people. So for example, you won't find initial point when we look at the school because it's 11th grade only that took it. And when you break it into smaller groups, they're below that 25 students, so it's redacted. But anyway, this is an example of what you can do. So with this data, this shows you each grade level that took ISATs. This is ELA. The next one down is math. And this is one way of looking at the data where you take your advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic, put them side by side as bar graphs. And if you'll change it to school, we stacked this one differently. So this shows you 100% of the kids and you can kind of see that range of where they fell. So there's different ways we can set up the dashboard depending on what we're trying to help people see and understand.
I kind of like that one.
I like this one too myself, but, because it gives you the whole picture.
Yeah, I don't know as a parent, but I.
So there's a variety of ways to set this up. But then what makes it really interesting, like if it's a public facing dashboard, we might just leave it at this. But there's also a filter, a way to filter this. And whatever, depends on what data is in here, but if we look at the economically dismanaged, when you click that filter, now it adds a new graphic. These are your students who meet the free and reduced lunch criteria and it compares them to each of the other grade level groups. So there's ways now for you to use this data to manipulate it, filter it, and look at it at a level you need to look at it. So that'll be unique. Instead of just having static graphs that we look at, we'll have this ability to filter down information. Over time, we'll add more features to this. There's an AI analysis tool in there, where in theory, depending on what data set you have in there, like if I'm looking, we were talking about graduation rates earlier. If I'm looking at the graduation rates and I want to look, compare it to attendance. If I had the attendance data tied in here, I could use the AI analysis tool and ask it to pull up all the kids that didn't graduate and their attendance rates with it. So we can start to do some data analysis right here within the tool. Those types of things probably won't be on the public facing, but on the internal, we'll have that data analysis to be able to look at it. So it's a tool that we're just starting to work with. Zach Green is our new data analyst. And so he has created this for us. He's working on some others. It'll take us time to get it really robust and working the way we want. But I'm excited to have the tool because I imagine that we'll use this a lot in our monthly meetings to be able to pull up data and then allow principals to dig down into it to their school level and pull up specific to them information. So I'm excited. These are all the things that we've added to work towards that goal. So we really appreciate the directive from you of the 2% and we really feel like that's achievable. And we're trying to make sure that we're very intentional and keeping it in the forefront of everything we do, so that we can hopefully achieve that.
That's great. I'm kind of interested in that in our program. I'd love to see that. Is there, can we set up a time?
Yes.
Maybe I could come observe that.
We can take you over. It's fascinating.
I would really like to watch that.
Yes.
On the first graph that you showed, like with the IRI and ELA ISAT. I just wondered, like, because it's sixth and eighth grade, is there one school, is this uniform across the schools that these are? Or is there one school that's different than the other?
This is the whole district data because that's what we're reporting there. I can get you school by school. The schools, the schools were similar, believe, I'm trying to remember back, since May that I looked. I think the ELA data was fairly similar between the two schools. The math actually was fairly similar too, just that Kuna Middle had made much more growth because they were further behind.
Got it.
That's what I recall, but I can get more specific for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you. And again, thanks for the directive. We're excited to reach that 2%. One step at a time.
All right, Brian, the enrollment update.
Yeah, another, another annual update we give you. August 27th is considered our fifth day. That's the first day that we've really turned in our first enrollment. Our enrollment on that fifth day was 5,703 students kindergarten through 12. Remember, we don't count preschool and then that transition, the 13th grade special program at the high school, we don't, we don't get to count them. So where does that number compare? I want to tell you that it's down and it's up. So I'll tell you how I, it's down 62 students from last year's fifth day, which was 5,765. It's actually down lower than we have been since before 21, 22, which was 5,715. So someone could argue that we're, haven't grown or we're stagnant in the last four or five years. Compare it to last year's fifth day with 21 students less in elementary and 64 students left in our high schools. But I'll argue they were up. So from the last day of school last year, so if you ask any teacher and say, hey, we have less kids, they're going to argue with you because compared to the last day of school, we have 64 more students. We have 46 more students this year in kindergarten than we had last year. So does that mean we're cycling back up? We have 23 more students in the middle schools this year than we were last year on the fifth day. We have 60 more students kindergarten, first and second grade combined than we were last year on the fifth day. So to, I'm not an expert by any means, but to me, that shows you, are we growing with those younger kids, younger families? Very strange, our ninth grade cohort, kind of what Trustee Lowe said about looking at this and then going diagonally to compare. Our ninth grade cohort, so as eighth graders to now ninth graders, there's 80 more kids in that class than last year.
So like they were 80 kids less in eighth grade last year than there are in ninth grade this year?
Same class.
Same class.
Well, where'd they all come from? Puzzling.
So the arguments of, that's how to me, so when we present it to our administrators, this number, can we control this? Do we need to do better in areas? Absolutely. I know, I know we're looking at some virtual opportunities. High school is already talking about how do we make it so our students don't want to leave, can't leave. Obviously, if your parents move to Texas, you can't commute from Texas. But those students that choose something else other than us. Next slide just kind of breaks it down by school. And I tried to put in the why for you as best I can. Kripo Point is 37 less students. Their outgoing fifth graders class was 19 smaller than their incoming kindergarten. So the large fifth grade class was leaving Kripo Point, so maybe that's a piece of why. Hubbard is up 76 kids. We rezoned. So we kind of did that to ourselves, obviously. Indy Creek is down 27 kids. Again, their outgoing third grade is 20 more kids than their incoming kinder. It's 42 less. Ross is 34 more, Silver Trail is 25 less. This is not the year to try to compare schools because of the rezones. But did we accomplish what we wanted to with the rezone? If you do fast math, 42 plus 25 is 67 kids are smaller in reading Silver Trail. But when you do that same math here, there's 110 more kids went to Ross and to Hubbard. So we, we definitely made it a little bit smarter, but did people move in to fill that hole pretty quickly with Silver Trail? It, it looks like it. That was just a fast enrollment update. Obviously, we are not standing here before you asking for an emergency levy. We have less students. We can't.
I'm just wondering if the people moving in don't have school age children. I mean, I'm just curious. I don't know into the subdivisions. I just kind of wonder clientele they're moving in.
Interesting, that new one on 10 Mile.
Yeah, the new one that they're building down the corner. Be interesting to see. But I'm just curious to know if that's some of the clientele.
Yeah, or they, or they really young, that's why.
Are they really young?
Our Kinder K through to numbers are going back.
Going up, yeah. Interesting. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Graves, Superintendent Graves. All right, patrons who signed up? So I just want to let you know that this is considered a business meeting, so we cannot comment on anything that is said or ask questions of anyone that says, is here to talk tonight. We are here to listen to you. You'll have three minutes. But like I said, we won't be able to answer any questions or ask any questions that you might have. You do need to state your name and your address, just to make sure if you can split districts. And I am really bad at this, so here we go. John Strickland. So you'll have three minutes.
Okay. So last year, oh, so my name's John Strickler, 2235 West, Willse, Minnesota, here in Kripo Point. Last year, I threw out the idea of turning the south part of the lot for the Four Street Gym into a miniature golf course. I'm here to throw that at you again, but I do understand that there is a proposal to buy the Four Street Gym. So this is kind of a backup. If that doesn't go through, this would be, basically be a nonprofit. It would be for fundraising, for different events and stuff like that. Mainly kind of a way to get kids over to do something here in Kuna. I think it's a great idea. We do build putting green, we build miniature golf courses. And I live here in the, in the area. My kids have been in the, in the area. They've complained that there's nothing to do in Kuna. So this is just kind of opening or throwing it out. So this is just kind of opening or, or throwing it out so that you can think about it if that proposal doesn't go through. Which if it does, it's fantastic. But we've, we would, we would really like to be able to do something and I know I've got a proposal ready, but I'm waiting on it. So anyway, um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Sid Anderson.
Good evening, uh, Sid Anderson, 2500 East Rock Falls, Lincoln, Idaho. I'm just here to share some thoughts, um, from the perspective of a community member serving on the capital planning committee. In our first meeting, we were given the timeline of five meetings over a period of six months. And this was not developed by the committee. This was given to us by the administration. In these five meetings, we were to understand and, um, all of the, uh, current and forecasted needs of the school district for the next 10 years. This would include identifying all necessary structures and improvements, additional schools, additions to existing schools and deferred maintenance and underused sites. Um, then from this, we were to develop a budget proposal for you, the school board to consider for a bond at the next election. This seemed like a bit of a lofty goal in just five meetings. However, it was clear by the end of the first meeting that there was an expectation that we would accept all of the previous work done by the 2022 capital planning committee and for the bond that did not pass. In spite of the lofty goal and obvious expectations, this committee was on track to develop its own unique budget proposal for your consideration in August. Um, I think that we probably would have had two options for your consideration. However, a few days before our last, um, meeting that was scheduled, we were informed that the administration had decided to cancel the capital planning meetings and that they were going to recommend that the board hire a consultant to survey the public. Uh, let me be clear, it was not the committee's decision to end its, end its work or the committee's decision to recommend, um, hiring a consulting firm. This may have been part of the committee's recommendation, had it been added as an option to its, to its scope. Um, I found a little bit rude and offensive that they disregard the work that this committee had put into and to help develop a proposal. And that they did not allow us to complete the task which we had been given and that they did not, uh, just demand our scope of including the, the option of hiring a consulting firm. It feels like the administration was not getting what they were expecting or hoping from the capital planning committee and they scrapped this group and proposed to you a much more time consuming and much more costly and much more lengthy process. I know this may not have been their attempt, but it seemed from a member of the community that wants to support the school district that, um, it makes it difficult to trust them and to trust the process. Those are my thoughts for your consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So. We hold it on two. It's scratched down.
Oh, it's scratched down.
Yeah. So, um, thank you very much for both of you testifying for that. Um, we're going to move right on along with, um, our superintendent search. And we have Katie from ISBA and so I'm going to give the floor to you.
Hello, everyone. It's good to be back in front of you and talking about the superintendent search again. So, um, I just wanted to kind of pick up where we left off last year. So I have some documents. I do believe they're in your board packets though. So let me know if you want a printed out version. I print sometimes, so. I like paper. So I will wait just a second for.
Oh, there's, okay.
Yeah, sorry, there's a lot of paper.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so basically where we left off last year with the search process was, um, kind of at the portion where we were going to review the survey responses and then finalize the brochure and start working to get everything ready. Um, so because of that, one of the first things we probably need to do to get started on the search process again is amend the timeline from last year. So, um, the first document I'll kind of cover is this timeline document that you have in front of you. Um, what I did is I took the timeline document, anything that's on this document that's highlighted in green is things that have already been completed, um, and don't need to be done again. Or if there is one on here that we could decide to be done again. And then anything that is in yellow is things that will need to have a date updated or a new decision made on, um, in order to make it up to date with this year. So kind of just, I'll go down the timeline with you really quickly. Um, the board has executed and signed the memorandum of understanding, so we're good to go there. Um, the next thing that we'll need to update is the board, um, approving, reviewing and making changes to the timeline. We'll need to update that to this year so that we're on track with that. Um, and then the next thing that will need to be updated is, um, developing the brochure. We are, we do have an up to date brochure from last year. So we will need to go in and at least update all of the dates in the brochure to reflect this year's search process. And then, um, things may have changed in your district in this last year that you may want to reflect in the brochure as well. So, um, I, I would like the board and whoever else had, wants to have eyes on it to review it and make sure that there's no additional items that need to be added to that. Um, the next thing that we did do, but is something that the board can choose to do again if they so choose, is to do a survey. So you do have survey responses from your patrons, um, community members, parents, all of that, as well as a separate survey that was just sent to staff. This is from last year. So you can either choose to review that one or we can do those same surveys again, um, and get some fresh data. So that may be something the board wants to talk about. And then after that, it, the board will want to work to determine an application form and when they want to open the application period. Um, I put on here some recommended new dates for opening based on your dates you selected from last year. It would change by like two days off. So in this first column here, you would see the dates from last year. Um, and then in this second column here with the yellow highlight is my new recommended dates for you. Um, and then you'll want to pick a new deadline, obviously. And then you'll want to pick a time to have a meeting to review applications. And then we'll need to update the starting date based on this upcoming 2027, I believe. No, 2026. Yep. So, um, that is something that the board will want to discuss and talk about as well as if you want me to review surveys, if we want to start fresh and I can join you for another board meeting.
I guess the first question for me is, do we want to do another survey?
I don't feel like the need, the desires of the staff would change about what they want in a superintendent.
Well, we do have new staff. So.
I think, I think we collected really good information.
I think we have, but I guess I'm just going to throw this out too. When I look through here, some of the people want, they're, want more transparency for us. So I'm wondering, I mean, we do have this information. Are we being transparent if we say we don't want any more information from the, our, our area, the people? Are we, is this enough or do we want to say, hey, maybe you didn't say something or things have changed? Are we going to open that up? I guess I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate here to, um.
I guess I'm fine either way. I, I feel like this is sufficient, but if somebody felt like they needed more, I'm happy to.
I just don't want the community to say, wait, you didn't, you didn't give me a chance.
Like we are going to have kind of some feedback times, right? When they come, like once we have applicants, then we will have times that people can offer feedback.
Yeah, but when I look at this, this is our feedback to see what the community wants us to be looking for. So when we ask questions of the community superintendent, most of our questions should be coming from these surveys on what they're looking for. And so I just want to make sure that those are the same things that they had a year ago because things have changed. I do like the questions. I thought they were very good since we made them known. But that's my, I'm just going to play devil's advocate there, you know?
It would be really easy if, if you did want to, even if you did it for a shortened amount of time, like two weeks or something, just see if you got any new feedback. Uh, all we would have to do, we have these in our survey monkeys, so we would just copy them over and create a new one for this year.
And then we keep these, but then we can add to the other, because really these are for us as we go through looking at the superintendent. These are the things that the community wants us to see. And I just want to make sure that we have new people, new kindergarten parents, new, I just want to make sure that we're keeping everybody. So that's my, my only thing. I think they had good, um, input. I just want to make sure that we don't leave anybody out.
No harm done to get more information.
I don't think so.
I would be happy to reopen it.
I like your idea, maybe a shorter window. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then if you want, I can join you for either, it could be a special meeting where we just review the survey responses. It would be an open meeting, um, anyone could come listen or we could do it at your October board meeting as well. So depending, because I mean, we could realistically get you those links tomorrow. So, uh, whenever you decide for the timeline of opening is what we could do. And then we can decide to review it whenever the board chooses to do so.
Okay, so I'm just going to kind of look at this. If we open up November 17th and we had that information by the middle of October, so just a couple of weeks in October, that would give us time to look over things and see the direction. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, and we're opening the, for applications, so I mean, we don't, we wouldn't even have any people to interview with the survey results.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's just to open it up, but it, like I said, the survey gives us a direction that the community is looking for. And that's, I think, the most important thing. So, um, yeah, if we had a, I, I think a couple of weeks in October.
Sure.
Would you, uh, open it up and, does anybody want to set a date or just?
I, it doesn't really matter.
Couple of weeks in October for the survey.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Just do it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say just open it up right now.
Open it now?
Yeah, like as soon as she gets the links, because then before the meeting in October 8th, we'll have the data.
We can do that. So that's, it's good to me. Yeah, it's a good idea. So maybe just open up for two weeks?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion, please.
Um, oh, wait just a second. I have to make a motion at a time.
You have to make a motion to set all of that up.
Okay, yeah. So then if we did that and then October 8th, we can sit down and talk about what we want in our application, correct?
Yep.
So that could be the November meeting, talk about what, what we want in the application for the superintendent.
Yep.
And then that opens up November 17th.
Yep.
And then, um, I like the January 31st deadline.
Yep.
I mean, this is what we kind of agreed to last time, just with 2025 outage.
Yeah, yeah. I just made them the same dates on the same days of the week, just updated the dates.
So then we'll just keep all the dates the same, so. All right, can I have a motion? Wait. Are there any other?
Wouldn't be in October.
It's October 14th is the meeting for.
So October 8th was a separate date.
They were going to have a special meeting. I say we don't need it.
I say we just October 14th. All right, that's fine. Okay. Do I have a motion, um, for the survey and the new superintendent search, uh, timeline?
I'll make a motion that we accept this timeline with the change of October 14th instead of October 8th for the board to review the survey results and that we go ahead and get the survey out in the next, as soon as possible amount of time for a couple of weeks to get more feedback. Is that a good motion, Deanne?
I say yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Kirsty?
Hi.
Michael? Uh, who are you?
I.
Naim and I. Okay.
Great. So I will get this timeline updated and then send that over to you all so that you have an updated timeline with updated dates. Um, and then from there I can go in and update the brochure. And once I have that updated, I will send that to Deanne to have her share with all of you so that if there are any changes that need to be made to the brochure, um, you can let me know. Those should be pretty easy. Like I said, um, prior to us pausing last year, we have finalized this brochure. So it may just be if you have some new programs or something particular that you want to highlight.
Some new celebrations.
Yes, yes. Um, and we'll get those dates updated, so.
All right.
And then we'll review surveys at next month's meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Brian Graves, similar project update.
I have two friends that will join me. Um, this is just your, remember 10 year plan to get the house bill money. So this is, we've completed year one, so just giving you kind of a, a quick update. I'm going to lean on Bryce and Johnny to give you the details, but our, our 10 year plan started at Indian Creek. Remember we did phase one of an HVAC project and a fire alarm panel work.
Yeah, this is where they're going to, sound a lot smarter than me.
So down in Indian Creek, as Brian said, you now have a fully operational voice evacuation fire alarm system. So it is up to code and should serve you well for many, many years. We also did the first phase of the HVAC system, which took care of all of your classroom wings. Um, the only thing we'll have left to do in phase two is just the gymnasium area. There's a handful of units that we'll do next summer. And we're waiting those documents right now for Katie. Once we get those, we'll get those set up to get out to bed. But yeah, I think everything at Indian Creek went really well. Um, you definitely see all the new units up there on the roof and, uh, there's also the pumps on the other wing, but everything's wrapped up and working well. I think all the DDC's been dialed in at this point. Relatively uneventful at Indian Creek. We were, we were very glad to find, uh, existing raceways between the buildings. So we didn't have to do any cutting and coloring to put in new raceways. So we were able to identify new raceways and the fire alarm tied together well. Um, similar scope over Ross Elementary. You have also a new fully operational voice evacuation fire alarm system. Um, a little more challenging, especially in the admin area and stuff with all the exposed glue lamp beams and things of that nature. But I think in the end it turned out to be a pretty clean installation for what we're dealing with. Um, again, phase one of the HVAC, uh, took care of all the classroom wings. Phase two is going to be much more substantial on Ross. There'll be quite a bit of equipment added over the admin area, food pantry, gymnasium, those areas to get all that taken care of. And there's also going to be some architectural screening that'll be coming up associated with that. Um, we'll also be doing some asbestos abatement, um, for the, to get rid of the existing boiler, some of the old piping and insulation.
It's a small boiler that we need to squeeze out the door.
Is there any such thing as a small boiler?
But yeah, I think everything at Ross is dialed in. Um, DDC, everything's been working well.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're up on Hubbard.
Uh, Brian? Yeah, you. Yeah, we just, Hubbard, Hubbard probably got next to the high school, the most work done. It started early. Remember our very first house bill project was the, um, fire alarm panel was completed. It was just after Christmas we got that finished. Uh, annex roof is, is, is finished. Uh, wall and door room, work in room 24. Remember we added a special ed program, so we had to do some, some wall and door work in there. Um, the annex restrooms, we renovated or remodeled or replaced the walls, the wall, urinal, toilets and floor. All in the boys and a little bit in the girls restroom. Uh, perimeter fencing was completed. And then what became our storage had to not be our storage anymore. So we had a, a, a very large furniture and storage cleanup removal and moving that was completed all over the summer. Johnny's crew was awesome. Um, hopefully Hubbard feels normal again, that it's the all big school. Kuna High School, most of what we did there was planned, but not all of it was planned.
I'll speak to what was planned.
A little accident.
So phase one of the HVAC and fire alarm, so on Kuna High, it was definitely a phase one project first summer. So phase one of the HVAC and fire alarms, so on Kuna High, it was definitely a phase one project, first summer, definitely had some challenges. Logistically, obviously, the, the hydraulic flood didn't, didn't help manage at all, but I tell you what, the way Johnny and his guys and everybody came in there and worked together with us, we could complete what we had going on to get that flooring upgrade, it was pretty incredible, so. Fire alarm, they are continuing to work, they can in off hours, but that'll get wrapped up next summer. Phase one of the HVAC, we got all the heat pumps on the second floor completed, and exhaust fans and stuff on the second floor, so we don't really have to go much and do anything on the second floor. That all sort of lay, locked out or replaced, our smoke dampers up on the second floor, they don't need to be replaced. So we'll have first floor, we'll have majority units, we're actually working on six critical units that came up after the hydraulic system was recommissioned this fall. School got back in session, so Johnny had identified all the real problem units before we got into phase one, but of course, six more weird and ugly had here in the first week of school, and Jay Kins and our superintendents over there tonight working on the last two of those over in the Boag area, and they're gonna be the most problematic of all, but we'll get through that this week, and then those, those other critical units will be done, but we'll start planning for next year.
So is it cooler at the high school? Like, what's the change in the, in the overall feel of the, like, is there improvement?
I can punt to our virtual, I, I know that if we wouldn't have the flood, and if we wouldn't have the six critical units go down, I think it will be cooler.
Yes, it's much cooler, especially upstairs. It's six critical units that they talked about, almost like your lab, and so that was critical, they fixed that one first, they did a great job fixing that one quick, for about ten days, four days, it was eighty-five degrees, eighty-seven degrees in that classroom. Ag is okay, because they can open the garage doors, but that's what they're working on next, but they've done a great job getting critical work done.
So some places are cooler in summer?
Of course, well, now, now, we're all pretty good, except for Ag, Ag is, their, their units are shut down.
We're hoping for fall. Quickly.
No, much, 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 much cooler.
Yeah, and obviously, just physics, the second floor, you know, that was really what we felt like, if we're gonna get anything, that would need to be second floor back. Any other questions? And thank you so much for having Ben and helping out, it's always an awesome work with the Kuna High School District.
Yeah, we also, we know that we did the main gym floor refinishing, we did a common lights, the commons cafeteria, for those of you that don't know, Kuna's the only place in the world that doesn't have cafeteria, it has a commons, but it's the lights and the cafeteria retrofit that we were able to do with Idaho Power, grant money, and then we get reimbursed. And then, we decided to replace the downstairs flooring the last two weeks of summer. We had a bit of a flood, then, if you haven't seen the floors, though, please, schedule time, Robbie, the floors are amazing, and we did make some lockers disappear, so I mean, lemonade out of lemons, but it was, it was a fun two weeks.
And so is, are the commons lights, like, were they just dim, or like, what was the issue?
Uh, they're just going out.
Oh.
Getting to rebuild them was kind of an expensive project, so we teamed up with Idaho Power and worked out a rebate, and I think they covered eighty percent of the repairs.
In hindsight, those were the, obviously, we didn't plan the flood, we did plan the lights, we did still put summer school over there, we did not maybe stress the importance to all of our teachers who do summer projects, summer things of how important it was to not be in there, so I know we slowed Bennington down a little bit, and we'll be, we're gonna be a lot more detailed in what we can and can't do there next summer to make sure the project is finished on time. Outside of those projects, we did, Johnny's team did some other work as well, we did, all the parking lots got repaired, cracked, filled, resurfaced and repainted. We completed the perimeter fence, the silver trail, so now all six elementary campuses have perimeter fencing. Will now move into the high, or middle schools next. We got an office space here, and we had an office space in Fremont. So it was, I don't know, I mean, then whatever broke, he had to fix on the fly. But we had to get it first summer.
I just want to thank Bennington for their chocolate bars whenever I go. I just want you to know, you make the best whenever I go to the ISBA convention, so.
See you in Corleone in November.
Okay, that's right, and I will be there to get my chocolate bars, so thank you.
So tenure plan is ten percent finished, next summer, so these, for projects next summer, obviously, KHS, second phase, this is not a small project, this is, this is gonna be a rather large project, and it's gonna be, it's gonna need, we'll need to change kind of what we have to do in the summer on that campus because it'll be such an extensive project, so.
We met with Johnny this morning, got our, to get our bid packages finalized and everything, also throw out the booking schedules and everything with that, so we should be ready to get those on the street and have numbers to be by next week.
Because we're, we're doing such an extensive project, we've talked about the gym foyer, as you've ever been to a basketball game, volleyball game, there are no vestibules at our, at our gym foyer, so if it is a windy day, they rake leaves in the middle of the event. If it's a snowy day, there's snow inside because of the stores open, it just causes, so we've, we've thought about, do we bump that project up because of the project, because the high school would be pretty much shut down, that would be an easy time to get in there, add those vestibules. They were in the original build of the high school plans, it just had got cut out, and it's.
Can you just say again where that would be, like, you come into the.
Basketball.
Basketball gym.
So you'll walk through a set of doors, and then it'll be that vestibule, and then you'll walk into the gym, so it'll just close in that, you can kind of see where they're, it looked like it was over hand pong floor, but that way, it's just energy efficient, especially in the cold, and, and even in the hot, trying to keep the cold in, so. Ross and Indian Creek, we've talked about combining that as, as one project, so when you guys see bids here, maybe, probably not in October, but probably for sure by November, you'll see the bids for these second phases come through, we're gonna combine that into one project, as far as the bidding process goes for Indian Creek and Ross. For second year, we've gotta consider a purchase of replacement, it's called the Jacobson lawnmower, I don't know Mr. Jacobson, he's famous for this lawnmower. It's the lawnmower, the decks go down, we're on a two thousand two and a two thousand six right now. And I cannot keep them both at the same time, and most of the time when you see our grass come along, it's because they're both in the shop. We brought this in the two thousand seventeen bond, we've punted and duct taped really well, but it's time that we talk about that, so I'll bring bids for you guys at some point for those. And then Reed Elementary was on year two, we're hoping we can stretch that to year three, we'll know, I told Mr. Jeffrey, we'll know November through January how bad that roof needs to be repaired, it doesn't smell when the rain comes. So those are kind of the year two, try not to, to overbite, but at the same time, get these projects done, so we can get to the year three projects.
Can you refresh my memory on where we're pulling the money out of this?
All this is house bill money.
All of this is, okay, that's, I want to make sure.
Yeah, it was all in that tenure plan, and I can, I can share that.
No, that's fine, I just, I just wanted to refresh, because there's so many things we look at, I'm like, I don't remember.
And I don't want anyone sitting here like, where's our project? KMS has a, has a large HVAC project that will get, LKV and Bennington involved. FMS has two-thirds of along, a big HVAC project, that, that's where the gym, both, gym was already done at KMS, so the Fremont will be the gym, and then the old, more veteran part of the building, the new building is obviously two thousand seventeen, so it's almost ten years old. Roof, silver trail, roof, Reed, so there's other projects that we're doing, but.
Yeah, I, I have heard the lawnmower is not safe, so I'm just gonna tell you, so I'm glad to see that on there.
There's a guy in the front row that may be able to talk about how funny those are, to keep, keep movement, because he drives them the most.
I was gonna say, that's what I've heard, so.
Do you want to, so I can sit down and jump right back up, but this, this is like combined into it, so you kind of know what's coming, the big projects, but we also have some smaller repairs that we can do as a maintenance department, especially with utilizing Johnny. We have some replacement of units that we can do throughout this, actually, you would love to start them tomorrow, but, so I have some actions for you guys. These are, these aren't ones we don't need engineered, we just need to replace the unit, so we have bids for you for the district office HVAC units.
Okay, so when you say bids, did you go out to get more? Yeah, I see the.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the ACC will help with that, is that a bid also next to it? Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five.
That's a bid.
That's a bid, so we have two bids.
So for the Kuna School District Office, we have a bid from TBR for forty-seven thousand.
And you're recommending that one, okay.
We're recommending.
Gotcha now.
From ACO for thirty-nine thousand.
Gotcha.
And then Johnny will oversee those replacements.
And my, what do you mean by repair?
They're not repair, it should say replace.
Yeah, they're after age of life.
Okay, so we're replacing them?
Correct.
And the Kuna School District and Reed Elementary and Crimson Point, they're all replacing them.
These are units that we.
So do we need to make the motion for each of these, one, one at a time?
With the dollar in them.
Okay.
So how does this compare to like, so during the summer, all these were done, and we're, we're able to replace these during the school year now?
And, and this isn't, like, we're not doing any boiler work, I'm gonna give me stuff.
Yeah, research is basically rooftop unit, so they, all this work can be done, but students will be.
It might be a little loud in the classrooms.
It'll be a little loud, we'll have to block off a little bit of area in a short period of time, but it's really not, it's not too good of a deal.
I think if that unit versus like doing the whole HVAC.
Correct, it's one unit for that, if like, the bigger numbers there for the gym, Reed and Crimson, just, just the HVAC that controls the gym.
And so these are not gonna be done in lieu of other HVAC, it's just that the fact that we can do these while the school year is coming.
All right, do I have a motion to go out to, to accept the bid for that HVAC, replace that for the Kuna School District Office?
Hi, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
Like, it's, if we get bids from like ACCO and TBR, is there not any benefit in going with one company, like, for the whole project of all these?
So when they, so the same two companies bid for everything, so they kind of added that, those numbers in as if they were winning the, the whole job. So I think we're pretty much where we need to be as far as then giving us any type of discount.
They're not gonna give us.
And is there any clarity on these bids as far as change orders is gonna be, like, is there anything, I mean, I think I talked to one of you guys, was it you, Jason, about the bid process, like, I, I guess I don't want to come back to the October meeting and be like, well, actually, there's a change order, it's now another forty thousand dollars. And so the scope of the work, letting, letting the contractor know, like, if it's a change order, it means probably a new meeting, that we're gonna go back to the drawing board with fresh bids?
That's a great question, and I can definitely talk to the contractor, contractors about.
Like, if that has been added to the bid process, like, I think we should wait personally.
So when you say wait, are you wanting them to rebid now with that in mind?
Yeah, I do, because I feel like it's just kind of a, it seems like a trend that, you know, you bid, you see extra work that could be done, come back with a change order and say that that's what seems to be done, I think we, we see that really regularly with contractors. And then we come back and we've got, or, and then it's like emergent, and now we've got to spend an extra forty thousand or three hundred thousand as it was last time.
Do we have time to wait on these then?
Uh, most of our bids are within thirty days, so we'll need them to rebid, and then you've got this unit, Reed is not working, Crimson Point is not working. District Office is.
Yeah, I, I think with these in particular, units being our two units, they, they're one unit, there's not, there's some dog work. What I'm trying to say is, there's not a lot that could go wrong here. So I think they bid, if there is something that goes wrong, it's something that they don't know right offhand, it'd be a surprise to everybody.
Can we put that in a motion now, to say that we accept this unless there's a change order, and then we, we want to go back, is that something we could put in a motion?
Yeah, and I'd like to see that added to our future bid process, if we can have that in. I think it, I mean, not that we can't ever say that there's gonna be a change order, but I think letting them know ahead of time, this is gonna delay it, like, give us the full scope of the work, they're the first, they're the people that know what the scope of the work is.
Sure.
Let us know, like, if we're gonna have to dig up a whole bunch of asphalt and redo it, we, we fully inspect the job and give us a full scope of the work. Maybe recommend additional work at the time of the bid, don't just give us your low bid for the bare minimum and then do a change order to double that.
Sure.
So.
So.
And I promise you, we, we did that, you're right, we did the change order with the asphalt, and this is now my fourth year, that was the only time I've done a change order. We've heard you loud and clear, we will be much more clear for what we ask for.
Perfect.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the HVAC replacement for the Kuna School District Office, understanding that we accept this bid with no change in order, or whatever?
I so move.
Okay. Okay, there you go, got it?
I need the dollar in them.
Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And a hundred, oh, you're doing each one?
I have to do each one.
Oh, you'll have to say that for each one?
Yeah.
Okay, we so move for the hundred and six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents for Reed Elementary. Additionally, the same.
Crimson Point.
For Crimson Point Elementary, a hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and KMS for forty-seven thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
No, just making sure it's with the change order.
Yes, with the outage.
All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm aye also. Okay, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Graves, and now moving on to Safe Schools, Four Street Gym, you're back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
I've done this all. Oh. Did I not?
Under Safe Schools, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Like, I told you, I love telling them also.
No, you, you got it, man.
I got it, okay.
At our August board meeting, we had a wonderful couple come up and talk to you about their desire to purchase the Four Street Gym. You guys asked us to, could we accept that offer, how do we do this? I shared with you guys the policy, nine twenty-two, it talks about the acquisition, sale of real property, and how our policy reads and how we have to go through this, because we can't just accept, we're, we can't just put a, say, you know, a four-step sign and sell it. We can, though, go through a process, in order to do so, we have to have a viable, what was I, lost my words, appraisal. We did one, remember, November twenty-second, it does say you've got to do this within one year, so we may want to consider making that more current if this process runs longer, or if you guys follow through with this process. Any questions about that policy I shared with you guys, I think, that we got for that meeting?
Yep.
Tell me what you think we should update. We may want to consider.
Well, the appraisal was November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and it says it's no more than one year, so.
I think it's good. Does it get another appraisal?
It costs a lot.
No, we don't want to pay for another appraisal.
No, no. No, I'm, I'm good with that one.
It's not actually all that great of information anyway.
And it's linked there, so if anybody in that community wants to look at it, it's right there, it's a whole. So next slide, does, just a reminder, this isn't me saying I don't want to, just a reminder, if we do choose to sell Four Street Gym, we do lose a gym space, we are going to not be able to use Kuna High's gymnasiums over the summer of twenty twenty-five, we already have a plan for that, gotta get that project finished. Indian Creek and Ross's gyms will be closed, but about a week each, we can definitely work around those, but it is loss of a gym. We will lose office space, technology currently uses eight offices there, loss of a storage space and a warehouse space, so I will, if you move forward with this process, I will be bringing you bids to do some renovation, probably, lack of a better word, cop shop. The, the building in the parking lot of Kuna Middle School is ours, needs some remodeling to, to make it a little restroom, but anyways, and we'll need some kind of storage warehouse, so I'll bring you ideas and bids and work with Bryce Leftfast, but I'll probably work with Bennington and LKV to bring you guys that if you choose to sell. It just won't be pure profit because we'll need to replace. Keep going.
Yep.
If we do this process, this is what our policy says, as well as Idaho Code thirty-three, four oh two, sections both two and three, we have to put a notice of the conditions of the sale, has to be published no less than two times. The first publishing twelve days prior to the next step, the second one five days. So October will be really tight, but I, we'll have to get all that stuff in the newspaper, the five people in the world that still read newspapers will read those, will obviously do all, you know, all the publications that we do. In that advertisement, we have to put the condition of the sale, meaning we have to choose, is it sold at auction, is it sealed? In that advertisement, we have to put the condition of the sale, meaning we have to choose, is it sold at auction, is it sealed bid? The other part of the condition of the sale, sold for cash, or sold for terms and conditions determined by the Board of Trustees for a period not exceeding ten years, with the annual rate of interest on all deferred payments not less than seven percent per annum, is that right? It's probably a fancy word. So, knowing all that information, there is in policy nine twenty-two, it talks about if no bid is, meets the appraisal, that we can't take them yet, but there is a process for continuing on that process of, of ultimately accepting bids that are lower, but it, it takes a process to get there. You don't have to accept any bids, if you choose your mind, or change your mind mid-process, so, um, it's a fun, it's a fun read when you read through policy nine twenty-two. Obviously, I think this is probably, if this process goes, this will be a process that me and probably Jill work together, cuz there's lawyer, especially if you guys want to do some kind of tenure. Brad becomes our mortgage.
And we have to decide that upfront now tonight.
What we advertise, well, I, my suggestion, the next slide, is you decide this first, and then, yes, you gotta decide it. Whatever is advertised, it has gotta have the conditions of the sale. Similar to what Trustee Lowe said, that way we're not changing it on the fly, we gotta put exactly what we want from the sale.
Now, I have another question, since our appraisal is due November twenty-second, does all of this have to be done by November twenty-second?
The way I read it is, it can't be longer, longer than one year, so Jason and I worked on that appraisal, we can talk to them and see if they can give us a, how that works, we can update it.
Just, this, do you remember, like, I'm kinda scanning through the appraisal, like, is there a number that you remember off the top of your head?
One point six.
One point six seven, I think, yeah.
One point seven was what I remember, or one point six, one of those.
And so, you don't remember, do you remember the process, if it, if we get a, if we don't get anything that needs one point seven million, like, are we gonna be done with that by November, or is that not required, or?
Would that be the terms and conditions, part number B?
Depends on how many people do the sale bid, and then when we, we have to go ahead and advertise, when we open the sealed bid, we have to do that in public, so anyone can come watch us open. If you've never been in it, when I do them, every time when we do the big projects, it's kinda fun, it's kinda weird.
Like the lotteries?
Yeah.
This is my first time, can I just say that?
Yeah.
I, I think that we should look at selling it, that you guys discussed. How, um.
Well, I think when we did the analysis previously, like, it, it's costing us money. And I think it's gonna cost us some money to get out of it, but at the same time, like, not, not as much as, I mean, we're a little upside down in it every year, is that what I, is that right? Like, I mean, not upside down, but like, we're spending more than, than what we're.
There's quite a few improvements that need to be made to it.
You know, I guess, like, I've been in the Kuna community for, since nineteen eighty, and I remember that gym was here way before that. So I guess my thing is, I just have a hard time with someone purchasing it and knocking it down, knowing it has been a big part of this community, um, for a long time. So, I mean, I get it, that it, we probably should sell it, it makes sense, it makes fiscal sense, um, but that part is important to me, so, I'm just gonna throw that out there. That's something I thought about, I, I think sold by sealed bid is probably the best way to go, I don't know how you guys feel.
That's what I would.
Is that what you would do?
I wouldn't do the auction.
No, no, I, I, no, and I would like to see some terms and conditions, for example, can we use it for a couple of years, maybe we can use it for gym use if we need it? You know, understanding that, I'd like to maybe see that a little bit.
So do we need to determine what those terms and conditions are now? So we need to say, like, how we're gonna want to use it, so that everyone can determine if that's part of the deal that they wanna accept.
The only, the only terms and conditions that we have to have in there are, is it sold at auction or sealed bid, and then how are we financing it?
I think we should sell it for cash.
I think so, too.
I have no idea, then I'd like the terms and conditions.
I think that's the only things you have to determine tonight.
You like the terms and conditions, like, you wanna, you want them to pay us over ten years instead of.
I like.
You want them to pay over ten years or a period of time?
I don't think I want that personally, I want the terms, like, we can use it for two years, that's what I'm.
I think that could be something we're.
But can we do that as like a, a later deal, we don't have to do that right now?
Or, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna go ten years.
She was talking more like allowing us to use it for two years, which would give us time to.
And that's not really a term and condition, like, the one they're talking about here is how we're gonna be paid for the building.
Okay, so that, see, when I see terms and conditions, that's what I think of, so, sold for cash, I have no problem with.
So, I think the question is, do we need to determine what we want out of a buyer, like, we wanna be able to use this, or whatever, or can we just, can it not be negotiated in a contract later?
When they, when we take a look at the sealed bids?
Right.
I don't know.
I think that would be a question, I'd feel more comfortable asking Jill, our district lawyer, cuz to me, I, I don't know if you're saying it has to be, or consider allowing us, you know, to rent back or to lease back.
Give us some time.
Yeah, I think it seems like something we would determine once we receive a bid, but obviously Jill would have to tell us that, but I feel like, I'd make a motion that we, um, move forward with the process of selling the, selling the Four Street Gym, um, by sealed bid and for cash.
And research the.
And research the details on what we need to do as far as the specifics of like negotiating the future use by Kuna School District.
Cuz then we can do the math backwards, the advertising, the five days and the twelve days to get it in there, to hopefully get you guys enough to buy out October.
Uh, I'll second that, so, any other discussion? All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for me, alright. So.
Now me, Brian's up, everything.
Assistant Becky Hall.
You know, I noticed everybody's standing up, but I had surgery on my foot yesterday, and I'm looking at my, I had to redo it, I'm not in the medical field, and I had to redo my daddy's, it's not.
Well, you can, you can stay.
Stay seated.
You can stay seated.
So, um, I've shared with you, um, a few times in giving you some background on this Idaho Youth Wellbeing Survey, the first thing I wanna say, though, is that it's only for the high school, and we cannot do it without parent consent. That, that's, you can't even move forward with doing anything unless a parent consents to do it. And, um, but the State Department has been asking districts to, to, to provide, to get this data for, for their schools, to help with some of the different grant opportunities that are out there for schools. But the big question is, when you're doing these grants, is like, well, how do you know, how, how do you know your school needs this money, and, and we don't have that information? And so, Chairman Dixon and I did a, a video call with Boise State, the, the two doctoral people that are running the survey partnership with the State Department, and we went through all the survey. And there's some of the questions we said, okay, we can't, you just, you gotta take this out for us, you gotta take this one out, and they did, and they gave us a, a different version, but in the survey, Boise State would come and meet with, with Robbie, Advent team, who they're prepared, they're just waiting, and the counselors, and the first thing that they have to do is have the, the, the parent consent form, and the survey is on that, our survey is on that, you know, the, the amended one. And if they don't get, like, sixty-five percent of, of the consent forms back for students that could take it, then they won't do it, then we can't do it, cuz they need a certain percentage, so if we don't get it, then we don't do it. But if we do get consent from parents, they're like, my student can take it, and if they take it, they don't have to answer all the questions, they can leave them blank, it doesn't matter, it's anonymous. So, um, I was just trying to look forward, knowing that I've done so many of these grants for years and what they require, we've given a lot of grace, um, in, in order to get grants, some pretty big dollar amounts. But some of those people have changed, and I also won't be here, but kinda training these guys up on it, but it requires some of those answers. And so, I guess what I'm, and we can't do a student survey without a board's approval. But again, the key to this is, we can't just, we wouldn't just be giving this to eighteen hundred kids, you know, just like in class someday and parents didn't know. There's a, there's a, a parent consent form that goes home to all the parents with the survey, and they can decide if, if they want their student to take it or not.
And the student does not have to answer every question.
No, they do not, no.
So what if the parent signs it, that they want their child to take it, and then the child is like, I don't wanna take it?
They don't have to. If there's no requirement, you know, there really isn't any, no one's forcing anybody to do it, it's just to help us gather some data and helping on, on what, what are some of our needs? And we don't, I mean, we, we know, kind of, but we don't, we don't have the, uh, actual data to back it up. So like, for example, um, I just did, and I showed these two how to do it, I've done this since forever, it's called a safe and drug-free school, uh, grant, that I do every year. But that one only requires that you put in the bully data, but we have that, we have to track that from schools, so that one was an easy one, to be able to plug into the, this grant, that's all it requires. And so that one was a seventy-four thousand dollar grant, but that's all it's required. But some of these other bigger ones, like from Office of Drug Policy, they have a new, a new supervision now, cuz Mary Ann retired, and I don't know the person, but that one, they've given us Graveson, for over a hundred thousand doll, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the past. But they're asking for, how do you know you need this, what data do you have? And the only data we've been able to provide on some of these are, you know, the demographic data that you can get online or things like that. So, and I just had a email from Katie Watkins from the state, who's, they've helped us with two SRO grants, that said that the districts are finding this data so valuable, um, in helping a kid, you know, knowing how to help some of the kids. So I guess what I'm just asking is permit, permission to at least allow Kuna High students to pursue this student survey grant. But please understand, it cannot go forward without parental consent, and they do a lot of, they wanna be transparent about every step that they take with this. It's on their, it's on their website, it'll be on our website, they want people to see it, you know, so.
And isn't a lot of the money that we pay the SRO out of come from grants that we're using?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, to me.
Like the Office of Drug Policy, that's one, but we also get, like in Bridges, um, we have the Third Millennial, it's a whole library, so if a student's suspended, there's the, you know, tobacco and alcohol and vaping, and they're, they're, they're up to date, really, really good resources, and that's like a twenty-five hundred dollar, um, a, a dollar amount, and that covers that, there's grants that cover those, but again, they'll ask you, how do you know your kids need it?
And this is what the survey tells us.
Yeah, it helps us just, like, well, twenty percent of our kids are vaping, I'm just, you know.
So without this survey, there are some grants we would not be able to get.
We, we won't, or we won't get very, yeah, yeah.
Is there, is the survey digital, or on paper?
I think there's both, but I do think that this consent form was electronic, I know, that goes to the parents, um, but I don't, boy, I think I have that on my desk, I can find that.
And then the questions that you had removed, how do you know they won't add them back in?
Because it's our survey, it's, it's what we have, and that's what goes in the consent form to the parents.
So this is the final, whether, whether.
Yeah, it's, it's the draft, I, what I shared with you is the draft, and if we needed to change, well, we, we kinda walked through what they really felt we could, and they took them out.
There were, there were ones that they said, no, we can't let that go.
And some of them were saying we absolutely have to take these out.
And what, so what happens if not sixty-five percent come back, like, are we out of luck on a grant then?
Well, that's the thing, is I think we've done our best, we've done our best, and, and what we say is, listen, we, we, we've done our best, and so now how, how can you help us if, if we can't get sixty-five percent of our parents to sign off? And that's about all we can do, is say we've tr, we've tried, you know, our board supported it, um, our high school was, they were ready, they were hoping we could do it, but if we don't get that support, then I, I mean, I, for me, for the rest of the year, I would just, I would make sure that they know, listen, we've tried, you guys, we're, we're trying, we're doing our best, so if we can't get that, then how can you help us, um, in a different way, because I don't know what else we could do.
So, basically, this is a hoop we have to jump through in order to get some of the grants.
It, it is a hoop, but you know what, I think it also helps us really, I mean, there's so many different things out there that we can send counselors to and our social workers to, and they take advantage of everything we possibly can, that's out there, some of it's free, some of it's not, it requires a registration, and there, there, there are grants from the state that allow us to, um, have them apply for it, um, for different things, and they'll, but the question will be, well, how do you know your students need this, why would we send you? So there's a lot of different opportunities besides even SROs, um, that helps.
And other grants that we can use for professional development.
Even the Meda Grant, and they have a new person now, and she was trying to, um, get me to, she was gonna ask me all these questions, this was back in March, and I'm like, um, no, this was already approved, um, before they had the change, and so they waived it, so we got the hundred and thirty-three thousand, but there's way more we can, there'll be a new one coming out in October.
And so this survey would be important to that.
Yeah, it would help us with even the Meda Grant.
And if a parent doesn't sign, they can't take it.
Right.
So if it's not returned, it's definitely like an opt-in kind of thing?
Absolutely, they could, even if, like, if, if a parent didn't sign in their, cuz they checked the list, if, if the parent hasn't signed off, they can't take the survey.
Okay, do I have any other questions, do I have a motion? Okay. I just, you know, I went through the questions, you don't have to, the kids do not have to answer all of those, uh, parents have to give approval, and in the long run, it's gonna help us as a school district, so I feel like it's something we should do. You know, it, you have to opt-in, obviously, and, um.
They're very transparent.
Yeah, so, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the school survey, uh, to be given to high school students with parents opting. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Any other discussion?
Well, no, I feel like the opt-in makes me feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
So, I, are you taking a vote, sorry?
Well, no, that's a discussion, so. Alright, um, Kirsty?
Aye.
Um, Michael?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I, aye also.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, um, Classroom Voice Project.
Chairman Nixon, trust me, we're going. Uh, so, last couple of years, technology has been working on, uh, modernizing our technology in our classrooms. Uh, this past summer, we finished up our view boards, swapped out our smart boards, smart projectors that weren't working, and our end-of-life PCs, swapped those out this summer as well. Uh, next project, next piece of equipment that is aging out is our voice amplification systems, which is, for those who've been teachers, like them, keep their voice, uh, nice and fresh. It's one of the few things that helps everybody in the room, from kids with hearing problems, kids sitting in the back, and the teacher keeping their voice fresh. Our oldest ones are fifteen years old, we can't get parts for them anymore, we've been limiting them along as long as we can, um, so, next slide there, let me, thank you. Uh, we went out, over the last couple of years, been looking at different solutions, we looked at. We looked at Front Row, which is what we have in our, uh, their newest solution, which is Front Row Unity. Uh, we looked at Lightspeed, Top Cats, which we'd have to do a lot of replacement work. Um, the unities are plug and play. They go right to our kind of speakers. And then we did an ABM Media Mic, which kind of was a Band-Aid. Um, it plugged into our system, but it doesn't have an amp. So once the amps died, they were useless. Um, I did go out and get, um, pricing on a couple of them, uh, even though Front Row was the one that we kind of picked because it was the easiest one and it is part of one of our partners' contracts that we go through with O E T C. Uh, both quotes are in here, guys, this is older for you. But this is going to be a multi-year project. I want to start off with sixty units this year, so that's what I'm looking for today. Questions?
Are the voice projects elementary mainly?
Uh, it's always room.
Um.
Where will these sixty units go?
We're going to be focusing with these sixty on rooms that are broken and out of classrooms without IP.
And then where's the ninety-nine thousand coming from?
Uh, this is part of the budget I have set aside, our supply budget every year for PCs. I'm planning on, since we just replace all of our PCs, using that for the next few years to get this going.
I just say, as a teacher, I use mine every day. It was so nice for the kids and it was nice on my throat. The only thing is make sure you turn them off before you go past the library or they will hear everything you say.
The great news with these ones.
Okay, good. That was our problem.
First experience?
Yeah, first experience. I went by talking to another teacher and all the kids are, they could hear me. I'm like, why are all the kids in the library looking at me? Well, forgot to turn it off. So, yeah, sorry.
No, you're good. It is something that definitely has to love till we want to.
Yeah. So, um, all right. Any other, are there questions, discussion?
I move to approve the purchase of sixty units for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Hillary?
No. Aye. I'm sorry, no discussion, but yes, aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
All right, so I'll pass this. Uh, I'm an aye, sorry.
Thank you. Next one's me as well. Um, E-Rate, same thing. Um, E-Rate's federal program helps schools and libraries get internet to kids so we can actually use it. Um, it involves a huge bidding process nationwide. Uh, we went out, collected our, our new stuff. Um, we go through approval, ranking, all of that stuff. Next slide. Um, our current one, our current, it was the end of the E-Rate cycle. We wanted to use as much of the money as we can because we don't use it and lose it. Um, our current project is to replace network equipment at Indian Creek and Mitchell Point. Uh, originally when these guys were set up, they were not set up for our one-to-one devices that we are now. So with this, we're going to get access points in every classroom so that their network issues that they've been having go away. Um, with E-Rate, currently our rate is we pay thirty percent of the bill. The federal government covers seventy percent. So of this project, um, thirty percent would be thirty-three thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
And that comes out of your budget?
That comes out of our budget, uh, we got a budget for every year.
Okay. That's nice that the federal government.
Yes, I'm glad it's, it sucked around because it was one of those ones I worried about.
I don't know how long it will be.
Yeah.
Gonna use it while we can.
That's right, go for it while we can. Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of E-Rate items for the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, which is thirty percent of the total amount.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right, Kirsty?
Aye.
Uh, Michael?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm, I also.
Thank. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a long meeting tonight, can I just say that?
We just.
I'm trying to go fast.
No, no, you can fine.
Uh, for those of you that weren't aware, we've celebrated Brenda a couple of different times. Brenda has announced her retirement, um, January first. With that, there has to be a solution to replacing her. One of the wonderings was the only way to go out to bid for contracting services, see if it's a, it's better cost effective for us, is you guys have to let us do this bid process. You don't have to. Um, the other option would be just post and hire a new transportation director. Um, a couple of years ago when we did A B M, uh, I can't remember if all of you were on the board at the time, but you guys asked, do we look at transportation next? We asked as politely as we could, we have the best transportation director, everything's going great. Please don't do this at this time. So is this the right time to look? Um, just for your sake, I, we can always buy more vacuums and then rehire custodial staff. When you do some transportation, you sell off your buses. So it's, you, when you do this, it's really hard to come back from it. Um, in our valley, when you compare us to other districts, we're the largest district that still has their own transportation. Emmett is the only other five A or six A school that still has their own transportation. Everyone else is contracted.
Okay.
So are they saving money? From what, like is, like what's your, have we asked around, are they happy with it? Like what are the drawbacks? What are the?
You guys can all joke.
I was gonna say, I asked around because we talked about it. And I've talked to David Reinhardt. He said, don't do it.
As I say, Nampa's been a disaster.
It's been, yes.
But like why?
Because you use, you lose your autonomy of it.
Well, and the drivers don't care about the kids, they're just working.
They're just working.
It's just a job.
You don't have a part, like let's say, he gave the example of, you know, this bus stop, the kids, they came too late. You don't have a right, they'll just say to the parents, sorry, you know, it's not like it comes to you. And then, then you get calls saying, well, what do you mean? Why is the school district not taking care of this? Because it's the busing people. So we don't have that autonomy. But, um, and my understanding too is it doesn't, it doesn't really save us as much. Where when we looked at the, um, cleaning, that saved us some.
Right.
And that's my understanding also.
But like, it is kind of good, I mean, I don't know this specific, but like generally it's kind of nice to let the people that do transportation, like we're kind of like the jack of all trades here. Like we're cleaning, we're landscaping, we're transporting, we're educating. So like it does kind of remove overhead, I guess, from our management. Does that make sense? I'm like a little, is it less stress in some ways? Um, like, because you're not hiring bus drivers, you're not hiring the transportation, you're not fixing buses.
Um. But they're contracted.
And they always, like, we're, like, in a bond, we're not going to be asked to replace the bus farm. Am I right about that?
Uh, or buses.
Or buses.
Like right now, we do not have a, a good, remember a couple of grads ago, Adam had a plan where we were buying a certain amount of buses because of our depreciation. We have to get a plan to get back on depreciation if we don't go this route. Um, H R, you're, you're a hundred percent right, you're, you know, you're not hiring as much. Um, we saw a decrease a little over thirty percent in our state insurance fund. Workman's comp now goes through them. But Brad and I would have a lot of work to do. Uh, we would bring you basically the Kuna School District's bid. Um, I don't know if you remember, with A B M, there was a question on why we just had the one bid and we went through the state. And, and in hindsight, I wish I would have brought you Kuna School District's bid and show, you know, been able to show you, this is what it costs us. So Brad and I would be tasked with, we would come to you if, if this was, if, if, there's also, I mean, obviously this is a public meeting, that there's no secret that, that this is a question we're asking. So we have a group of transportation staff that are, I don't know if words yet the right word, but then there's some trepidation about that and we never want anyone to feel like we don't want them. So we would do this very respectfully, just like we did with A B M. But there's also going to be that. I mean, there's fifty, between forty and fifty staff.
They're on Percy also, aren't they? That's correct.
Well, no.
No.
Now you're a press company, so I, I would assume A B M was not, I mean, that's a state.
No, they're not, but the bus drivers.
But no.
Now they're currently on Percy, they currently get state Bennies.
So are there, are, like, are there kind of a lot of bus companies in the valley? Like, I mean, I just remember something was in the news, not, is that Nampa?
Yes.
That like the parents like lost their minds for some reason. I don't remember what it was.
Yeah.
Durham Brown Bus Cascade.
And was it like a loyalty issue? I mean, tell me what the problem was.
I can't, you want to, you can't speak to.
So when I, because when I was in Nampa, we, we, I didn't know any different with the contract with Brown Bus and they were always very good to me. But last year, when they went out to bid and, um, there was some kind of glitch in there in the whole bidding thing, but they went with a different company who was new, who had never been here. They were out of like Missouri or someplace. And Brown Bus had been in Nampa for years. So it was a disaster because these guys didn't have enough buses, they didn't know routes, they didn't, they haven't, they didn't have any places to put their buses. So it was a terrible disaster. Then they went to the four-day week, the bus route, the kids weren't getting home till six o'clock. I don't think that would have ever happened with Brown Bus because they knew, they know Nampa. But, so I think that's what happened with this new company. I think they probably ironed it out a little bit more. I just know, and I'm not advocating, but I love our people here. I just didn't know any different when, um, when I was in Nampa. But, I mean, we knew, we had a relationship with the people at Brown Bus. So we could call them to say, okay, we gotta have a bus for athletics, things changed. And they would, they were very good to work with us. I, but Brenda and her staff does the same thing, you know, they're great. They'll, on a dime, they'll turn around and go pick up kids or do whatever.
Well, because they're part of a family.
Yeah.
We're all together.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my question too, is Brown Bus from Idaho? Because a lot of these companies are outside of Idaho that you're dealing with.
Brown Bus has their office in Nampa, off of Amity, behind Amity.
I know where that's at because we started, but, um.
Well, and this is just to go to the bid process, we don't have to accept no bid. We can see how much it is. If we have a K S D bid too, that's helpful, I think a great idea.
I think, I think that would be, just so you guys can compare.
Yeah, my other question is, do we open it up? Do we have someone in the bus program now who would take Brenda's place? Do we have an assistant that would move up? I guess that's another question.
No, he was saying we have to fight the matter.
Yeah.
Well, to, to go to the bidding, we would have to do, we'd have to follow the, the.
Oh, no, I meant, I meant to hire.
If you were to do a normal hire, we would, we would do.
We'd have to open up, I was just wondering, is there someone?
We would post it both in and out.
Yeah.
I, I think we would assume there's, there's a couple of people that would apply for.
Within, I guess, within the bus. I'm wondering if there's somebody.
But nobody that's, that's been a transportation director. I, I was never a principal until I was.
Right.
You know what I mean? So there's, you've got it, there's those moments. So, I mean, we definitely, we would assume that would be people.
So.
It wouldn't open it if we chose to go contracted though because of.
Um, haven't I heard a little bit about like an outdated program that we have as far as like scheduling bus routes? And without Brenda Saxton's like expertise, we wouldn't be able to make it work?
Uh, currently the program we use for, uh, the trip requests is their older version. They're working on, the company that they use for the trip program or for busing channel is working on every version to include with, uh, normal routing.
But we do have a good system for normal routing?
Yes.
It's updated.
It's updated.
The routing system updated a year ago.
That's why we ask those questions.
Probably what, I probably remember it from when we updated it.
I, I think the thing is like you meant, I mean, we get, you know, we're like, we're physically responsible on everything. And it's like, so this was just a way to say, I mean, let's show you, let's be as transparent as we possibly can to show you this versus this, just like we did today with the, um, cleaning, you know? That, that would be the only thing. We're not advocating either way, but, I mean.
And if Brenda wasn't retired, we wouldn't be asking you to do this at all.
Well, I'd make a motion that we go through the process of collecting bids to contract transportation for the twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-seven school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote no.
I would prefer Percy, but I'm okay.
Well, this is just to bid.
Right.
We can still choose a Percy.
Yeah, you can investigate. But I, I know, I get it, but I'm still gonna vote no.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Did you vote?
No, I said yes.
She said yes.
Because you're like two and two, what are we gonna do?
I did vote no, but I'm not for the two and two.
I believe we.
Let's not try to look it up.
I'll change my vote.
I'm just kidding.
Don't change your vote.
I'm just kidding.
I'm wrong about taking care of the kids and I don't feel like outsourcing takes care of the kids.
I'm about using our money the most wisely so that we can take care of the kids outside.
I want them to be safe.
Yes, sometimes.
I think that the kids in Nampa are safe.
They actually were not, they were not safe at all.
Like Brown Bus company, which has people all over.
You were brown. Anyone struggled.
That doesn't mean they're a one.
But Brown was.
They were good ones.
Um, all right, let's go ahead and move on here. Um, Student Learning Calendar, Jason Reddy and Kristi Wong. By the way, congratulations, Kristi.
Thank you. I missed the introduction for me. All right, so last school year we worked on this, um, the committee worked on this. And then we had the, for what we are proposing, um, there was some logistics that had to be, um, because we're changing. It's a significant shift. Um, so we did what we would, our traditional calendar that we followed every year. And then the one where the semester ends at winter break, which follows other districts more currently. And for secondary is really helpful because of lots of learning over the break. Then they have to come take finals and our D C courses and when college courses end. Um, so for secondary, this is a much needed move. Um, but our proposed one is that we start, we're gonna start a little bit earlier. We end the semester at Christmas break, um, and then we get out on May twentieth. So that's what we have proposed.
Spring break is the same as West Data's.
Yeah, man, can I just call up that one?
Yes.
So this is, this is the twenty-six, twenty-seven proposal. And if we've, and we want to do our calendar approvals on a two-year so that we can have a couple approved at a time. This is the twenty-seven, twenty-eight proposal. The interest in the community has always been, well, I shouldn't say always, most recently been to align our spring break with West Data because we have so many parents that, you know, they, they live or work and go in both places. And so to have them different weeks was really difficult for some people. So that's been an interest. We don't know for sure when, um, West Data's spring break is gonna be in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year yet. I spoke with their assistant superintendent last week that's in charge of this. And he said that he'll be working on, um, their first draft proposal for their November meeting. And so we'll know here very soon when their spring break will land, so this is the only.
Do they not do two years at a time?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Do they not do two years at a time?
Um, you know, I didn't ask him that. There was a time where they had several years kind of sketched out, but I didn't see it last time I looked. I spoke to him in person on Tuesday, yesterday, and he said he was gonna have the, the first draft of this ready for the board. Or their district leadership maybe in November.
But their twenty-six, twenty-seven is the same.
This one's done, yeah, this matches. Um, but, you know, this is basically three school years from now.
For spring break, that's our only question.
I love the idea of being done before Christmas. That's wonderful.
And before they add the memorial.
Yeah. But then as I was looking through, it looked like, not this calendar, but the other calendar. It looked like elementary, like the second, not this option. I just wonder, yeah, I was just wondering the reasoning for that.
So this is for, so secondary likes this for the student learning.
Right.
And elementary's in trimesters.
Right.
So the overarching theme was it's warmer in August than it is in May.
Okay.
And that's true. If you're elementary and you don't have to consider our secondary, absolutely, you want to have more hot than cool weather. Um, that was primary, because it doesn't affect elementary at all.
Okay, that's my question, because I just noticed that. Okay, that's my question, because I just noticed that.
Yeah, I did notice that, that teachers in, in elementary liked the other calendar.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because they, they're not impacted by semesters at all.
No, and then the other one, I remember a couple of years ago, had to do with the work days. Or the first, um, first parent teacher conferences. And I noticed that everything seemed to be okay between the two.
We worked on correcting some of those things.
I just remember that.
Last year. Yeah, you guys, we modified our calendar.
That's why it is our future, the second and the ninth.
And I like the way you guys have it, two days and then a day of feeding.
And we have our election day, um, for all of them in Nalda, so they're all speeded up.
Yeah, that's good. All right, any other questions? Do I have a, a motion?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Has there been any research on how it affects like grades and, or learning in, to, to end before Christmas? Like, is there a big improvement in the, in student learning and outcomes?
I would have to call up the research.
I know, I was gonna...
I, I think, um, being a secondary teacher for ten years, I could tell you anecdotally for sure that our students are gonna do better on their final exams if they don't have...
I mean, it feels like it.
Fourteen to seventeen days in between the last time they got instruction and then like...
How about most of the school districts now in the valley gone to that model? So I think we're one of the last ones.
Align with the other school districts.
And then I guess the other question is, do you think that people will not feel as rushed to get back to school after the Christmas break because it's the beginning of a semester instead of the end? I think that seems like a concern attendance-wise, that first little day. I think I might feel that way.
That's why I'm saying it, like, I'm always like, well, we gotta get back, you've got finals. But now I'm like, well, it's just the first couple of days. Just saying.
That's where all that great relationship building happens.
I didn't hear that.
I'm just, I'm for, I know I'm not the only one.
But you know, it is kinda interesting when you, if we've seen, especially senior parents, oh, too, is that you're starting your last semester. You know, it's just, there's just this different sense that you're after Christmas, I'm starting my last semester of school and I can do it. It's like a fresh start. It's like a fresh start, yeah.
And for those of who's, who are going to college, you know, it works really well for them, for taking class.
And I can't remember how this affects, like, is this something that the people that, for years, I felt like in Q and A it was something that people resisted because of the fair, like four H or something?
Yeah, so we eliminated that because of the number of kiddos who actually do FFA now. It's decreased, it was, what was the number? It was really small.
It's less than one percent.
Yeah. And it's still, still, it's a school event, so they still can go to those things.
Well, we were a smaller school district, more into culture, a lot of kids.
Well, every year, they've said no to this.
Yeah.
I think our community's finally evolving a little bit.
So now, do I have a motion to accept the calendar?
I make a motion to accept the proposed calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Twenty-seven, twenty.
Oh, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
In the second, in the pink, you're just gonna designate that to be whatever West data is.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I hope... Uh, Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. All right. Assistant Superintendent Frank Gray.
Trustees, uh, Special Director Kelsey Everett just notified me that one more presentation, I break a record, so.
Wow. Wow. I thought someone's keeping track of all this.
Bandied problems.
There are eight. Those of you that may keep in track, this is the, like, on deck, our December presentation. Everyone that we've, has been caught back up. Next week, or next time will be the third quarter and then we'll just be doing quarterly, so this is...
Wow.
Um, I just have...
First Amendment, so I stand here for...
Yeah, four sixty-two says staffing patterns, but when I clicked in on it, it was Title I, uh, comparability services.
It changed, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't need to change on the other. Of course, if you go back to the...
That, that's what it's currently called.
Yeah, that's the current name of it.
So when it gets all the way through, it, it will, just like all the red, it'll, that will change. Because it's a title one.
Okay, because I was like going, it's not only a staffing pattern, it's more of a title one, okay. All right, that's my only question.
No Child Left Behind Act is now called Every Student Succeeds, is that the same thing?
Not the same thing, but the, the...
That's like what it's been replaced.
What it's, yeah, it was replaced-ish.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to amend the following. Four eleven, four sixteen, four sixty-two, five oh six, five oh seven, five oh eight, five sixty-six, and eight fifty-two.
Second.
Okay, and Hillary?
Hi.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
I'm aye also. All right. Now?
It's, I think it says a remove on ours.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
On ours, it says remove.
I'll make a motion that we remove policy number six oh seven.
Was that moved somewhere else or are we, that just not, it's not a policy?
You don't have a...
I know prom scholarship be, it, like, twice removed from advanced opportunities.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and, uh, Hillary?
Aye.
Kirsty? I'm aye also. And five twelve?
I make a motion we adopt policy five twelve.
Second.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael? Hillary? I'm aye also. All right. Second reading, policy.
Three amendments. This one were, was things that you guys corrected, five forty-four got lost, so we brought it back out live. And six thirty-two, you guys actually approved as a second read last time, but you approved it as six thirty. Just anytime we do a policy change, we just wanna be transparent. We're not trying to trick anyone who's in that, so it's really six thirty-two, nothing else changed but the number. So those are the three.
Okay, I wondered, because I was like, I don't see anything.
Now you know why.
Okay.
Thought we lost it. We found it.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend four oh three, five forty-four, and six thirty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hillary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
I'm aye also. All right.
In the quarter, three updates that you see next week, three fourteen and four oh three point five got fixed again. So we did the second corrections based on her corrections. So there were a whole bunch of changes from, you guys saw first read. But you get an ass form, they were just, instead of taking it all the way to third read and then bringing it right back to fix it, we fixed it on the fly. These two were the corrections you guys asked us to add.
Okay, do I have a motion?
This is the final time we'll see these?
No, they'll go to third read and get second.
Okay, this is just second.
Second, just second.
I make a motion to adopt three fourteen, four oh three point five, nine twelve point one, and nine twelve E.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion?
No.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm all, I also. All right, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I can move.
Okay, you got a second? We're coming down, all right? Any discussion? All right, Hillary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. Ah, that brings us to the good of the order.
It's really good those policies were not super complicated for them.
I know. Or controversial. Anyway, I'm gonna say, um, homecoming week, September nineteenth, do a replay, people. Robbie?
Mountain View.
Mountain View, okay.
Are the bleachers gonna be fixed?
We're told to be fixed.
Okay.
It's okay, they moved the students, so they're good where they are.
They're coming from Maine.
Maine?
Yes.
No tariffs from Maine.
Good. What? Okay, ISBA Region Three meeting September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. I do plan on attending that, that's where they will bring the, uh, proposals. They'll be covered at ISBA for the year. So if anybody else would like to, I would welcome you to come. Because that's where we... I have not, am I supposed to? I just figured.
She was just gonna show up.
I was just gonna show up, that's what I've always done. I just show up. I just, I show up and I go, okay, here's the proposals. And I go, okay, great.
Today, so I will get you registered.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going, did you need to know that?
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
I'm out. Sorry.
So those are the proposals I'll bring to you. I think I bring...
It's in quarterly, is this right?
No, 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 no. This is, yeah, this is where we go over the proposals that I will bring to you. And then we will vote on whether we want yes or no when we go to quarterly, ISBA.
So you're gonna go to vote?
Yes. I know. I rock it, I love it. So I guess, is that the best way to explain it?
Yeah, I get it now.
Okay. Then we have the first respondents in military appreciation, October tenth, twenty twenty-five, that's at the, I believe. Our next board meeting will be October fourteenth. And Zone Three and Four trustee election will be November fourth. And then the twenty-twenty-five ISBA Annual Convention will be November twelfth to the fourteenth in Quarter Lane. And I would love to go in. If the new, or some, obviously, Zone Four will be new. If that person wants to go, will they be able to go then?
Yeah, we'll just have, it'll be a late registration.
Okay, I was just curious about that. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, any discussion? Okay, here we go, Kirsty?
Aye.
Aye.
Hillary, aye, and I'm aye also.